Good morning again. I want to call to order the workshop for hurricane preparedness with our guests from NOAA.
Do we need to wait for a call?
I'm going to, I'm gaveling it because they will show up. They're all out there scattered.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, we've already done an invocation and a pledge once this morning. We'll do another one at one. Roll call, please.
This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this ninth day of April 2024. In attendance are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schleba. Oh, well, the county administrator and county attorney are not here yet.
I did say five minutes. We're now at 10 minutes.
Yes.
Does anybody know where Commissioner Finnegan is or Mr. Howard? Okay. All right, we'll just. Marisol?
You can just be in charge for him.
And the Assistant County Administrator, Marisol.
Thank you. Welcome. Do you want to have any opening remarks or just turn it on over? Okay. All right, thank you. Mister, how do you pronounce your last name? Lamar?
Lamar, yep, correct. All right, yeah, good morning, everybody, and thank you to the commissioners and Commissioner Kennard. I know we've been working a lot ever since Hurricane Adalia and also the December storm that produced a lot of impacts across Citrus County and and across all of the west coast of Florida. And we were actually together last Friday in Fort Myers at a meeting that NOAA's National Weather Service does every year across the entire country called the Integrated Warning Team. And we're going to repeat it again in Tampa on April 23rd, but definitely appreciate the time to come up here, especially if for a full hour. Usually I get about 15 minutes at different locations, but want to go through a lot of the impacts from the hurricane season and what we saw across all of Florida and also localize it here to Citrus County and talk about what are we looking at for this coming season as we move into hurricane season, which is starting pretty soon.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I interrupt for just a minute? Brian, if you don't mind, for folks in the room and hopefully lots of folks watching at home, can you just give us your credentials? Because when you and I had a Zoom meeting, I was very impressed that I was sitting there having this meeting with you, the graphics, the explanation really were very, quite impressive. And then we had a great conversation last Friday. I'm just, I'm happy that you're here today, but there's a lot of folks here that don't know who you are and what you do with the National Weather Service.
All right, perfect. I always like to put the spotlight on preparedness, but I'll take a moment. So again, my name is Brian Lamar. I'm the meteorologist in charge of the National Weather Service. We cover 15 counties across all of west, central, and southwest Florida. I have 30 years in the National Weather Service as of this year, and I've been in charge of the Tampa Bay area weather forecast office for 17 years now. And I started my career in Connecticut, moved to Texas, also moved up to our headquarters in DC, went back to Texas, and came here in 2007.
Great, thank you. Thank you. And before you get started again, I want to tell the audience that when we do open to the public, if you have a list of questions to bring up, that would be helpful. And Mr. Lamar has agreed to, and we're changing protocol a little bit, that he would come up back up to the mic and answer any of y'all's questions that you want to put forward. Thank you, Mr. Lamar.
All right, thank you, and appreciate that. Definitely looking forward to any questions at the end. So what I want to do is kind of talk about a little bit on how the climate has actually been impacting, you know, the severe weather across the whole United States, not just Florida. And you can see here, this was 2022, so there were 18 different weather events that each of which produced economic impacts of $1 billion or more. So again, as I'll talk about Hurricane Ian, that was over $112 billion, but these were 18 different weather events. And you can see on the screen, you know, we're looking at anywhere from Hurricane, you know, Ian, Hurricane Fiona, and Hurricane Nicole that impacted the Caribbean and Florida. So we saw a lot of impact from storm surge, wind damage, and unfortunately, a significant loss of life as well. Now, going forward, looking at last year, you can see a storm that probably resonates with everyone in this room today and those listening. You know, Hurricane Adalia is on the map there, and you can see there were 28 different weather and climate events that each of which produced over $1 billion worth of damage in the United States. And that's really stretching anywhere from, could be winter storms, hurricanes, could be wildfires, could be drought. You know, we're seeing these events increasing in numbers every single year. These stats were started in 1980 when the number of events were in the single digits. And due to climate change, due to a warming climate, and also due to economic building in highly vulnerable areas, we're seeing all of that combined, and we're seeing the values go up for the number of impacts. But looking at hurricane season, you know, this image is pretty powerful. And usually this is when everyone kind of turns their head a little bit to see what the days are on the top. You could see September 10th is kind of like the peak of when we look at the hurricane season. And this is really when we see the warmest waters in the Atlantic, the warmest waters in the Gulf of Mexico. This is when most storms tend to form. But we have seen tropical storms and hurricanes form in pretty much every month of the year, but this is when, on average, you know, based on climate data, this is when they typically form, June 1st to November 30th. And that early to mid-September is when we tend to see a peak in the number of storms. And I'll talk about what we're looking at this year because it actually looks like it's going to be well above normal, which is something that none of us want to hear. But looking at the past several years, so this was from 2017 through last year, when we talk about major hurricanes, you know, that's category three, four, or five. So we measure the intensity of hurricanes based on wind speed. Okay, now that's different than what you hear about us talking about with tornadoes. You know, F0 to F5, that's all based on damage, okay, with a tornado. So a tornado has to damage something. We assess the damage, and we work with local emergency management to do that. And then we assign a rating. With a hurricane, it's based purely on how strong is the wind. Is it 74 miles per hour? That'll be a category one. You know, is it 155 miles per hour? That'll be a category five. So from the past handful of years, the Gulf of Mexico is extremely vulnerable portion of the United States, and you can see the number of storms that we've had across that area. Anywhere from Hurricane Harvey in 2017, we remember Irma in 2017 that impacted the west coast and south coast of Florida, and of course, Adalia just last year that made landfall just to the north of where we're sitting here today. Now, looking at the actual statistics of what actually occurred last year, so again, this is the 2023 hurricane season. And as I always say in TV interviews, whether it be on national news or local news, it only takes one. And we saw that with Ian, we saw it with Adalia, we saw it with Hurricane Michael 2018. But you can see there were 20 named storms last year, seven of which became hurricanes, and three of those became major. So again, category three, four, or five. Now, on the right-hand side of those numbers, you can see in parentheses, I put 14, 7, and 3. And what that means is that's what we should see. Okay, that would be a normal year. You know, we should see 14 storms. We should see seven hurricanes, and we should see three of those become a major. Okay? Now, you know, looking at, you know, the first storm, you know, the the atmosphere doesn't care about the calendar most times. And so May 30th, we had Tropical Storm Arlene that formed. And the last storm formed on October 18th, and that was Tropical Storm Tammy. If you remember 2005, you know, that year should ring a bell. I see heads nodding. You know, that was the year of Katrina. You know, that was the year of Hurricane Wilma. That year, we actually exceeded our list of names, and we went into the Greek alphabet. Okay, something that has only been done twice ever in our observable history, 2005, and also unfortunately, 2020. So we actually exceeded the number of lists. So we have, we all know there's 26 letters in the alphabet. Well, we used 21 of those letters, okay, because we don't have many names that start with Q, U, X, Y, or Z, so those names get pulled out. Well, this year, and we're no longer going to be using the Greek alphabet because after the COVID pandemic, there were variants called Delta and Omicron, and those were actually Greek letters. So we didn't want to scare the public even more, saying there was a hurricane COVID variant, you know, coming towards us. That would not be good. So now we just have a second list that we use of names. So again, looking at the image going forward, you heard a lot about El Nino and La Nina in the news, and Chris Evans is in the audience, the emergency management here. I work closely with him on a lot of preparedness efforts across Citrus County. And we talk about what does it mean when the atmosphere changes, El Nino to La Nina. So we've been in El Nino for the past several months. Okay, the last hurricane season when we had Adalia, that was El Nino. And that typically would reduce the number of storms that we had, but yet we had Adalia. Okay, now I'll go back to another year that may stick out in our memories, 1992. I see some memories going off there. So August of 1992, the very first named storm, the letter A, Andrew. So devastated South Florida, moved across the state, moved in the Gulf of Mexico. We were coming out of an El Nino year during that year. So just because we're in either El Nino or La Nina, it's not a yes or no. Okay, we can get storms during El Nino when typically you see on the graphic that red arrow, that's the jet stream. That's the strong river of air above our heads that tends to break apart thunderstorms, and it tends to reduce the number of storms we get in the Atlantic, but it doesn't eliminate them. You know, so Andrew, again, 1992, we had a below-normal year. We only had seven storms that formed out of the whole Atlantic Ocean, seven storms. You know, average is what, 14? But again, it only takes one, and we saw what that did. So again, El Nino, you can see what it does across the area. You can see on the right-hand side that we usually have fewer. Again, it's not zero. We usually have fewer hurricanes due to strong wind shear. Again, that's the winds that blow across the Gulf of Mexico, across the Caribbean, across the Atlantic. And it's opposite over the Eastern Pacific. We tend to see more. But we're actually, unfortunately, moving into a La Nina weather pattern. It's happening now. And that usually happens when we start seeing cooler waters over the Eastern Pacific, from off the coast of South Carolina over in the Eastern Pacific. And we tend to see cooler water. El Nino is warmer water. So what does this do for our weather? Well, you can see the jet stream, you know, that blue arrow now is usually a little farther north. You know, our storm systems tend to come in from the Gulf of Alaska, dive down the plains, and then over the Great Lakes, and we will get clipped by them. Very similar to what's going to happen here on Thursday. The jet stream will look like what was on the map, and we're going to have a cold front move through here on Thursday. You'll see some strong thunderstorms Thursday morning into early afternoon. But La Nina usually will, again, allow for more storms to form in the Atlantic, in the Gulf, and in the Caribbean. So it's what we don't want to see, but again, we can't wish ourselves to preparedness. We have to treat every single year that it's going to be the year that we're going to have a hurricane or a tropical storm. So again, very similar to what we saw before, but opposite, we tend to see more hurricanes in our part of the world during the La Nina. And La Nina will start getting stronger for our area during the latter half of the hurricane season, which again coincides with the most active time of year for that September, October, and November. And this is interesting. I pulled this off, actually right before I sent it in for today's meeting. This is showing historically the El Nino and La Nina years dating back several decades. And you can see, it's definitely hard to see on the screen, but you can see up on the top is going to be the El Nino years. Those are the warmer years. You can see that really tall peak on the left-hand side, that's 1997, 1998, when we had a very strong El Nino year. If you remember, if you were in Florida, 98 was a very active hurricane season because we were coming out of it, that dip. But 97, we had very few storms in that area. But another thing to think about, it's not all about hurricanes. We had a very active wildfire season in 1998. There were tremendous amounts of wildfires across the state in 98. A lot of air quality issues, a lot of smoke issues, a lot of fires that were not prescribed burns that got out of hand because it was so dry, and we had a lot of strong wind in the area. So again, you see how the earth system fluctuates. Usually El Nino, La Nina changes every one to three years. We were, had very record territory the past three years. We had three years of of La Nina, which does not usually happen. And that gave us a lot of active hurricane seasons from 2020, 2021, 2022. And we had a lot of impacts in the Gulf and in Florida. But taking you through a series of graphics, this really shows you, again, what should happen. Remember I said we should see 14 storms, seven hurricanes, and three of them could be major. So now I'm going to take you through June, July, August, and September, October, November, and show you, okay, this is the entire Atlantic basin. You see Africa on the right, South America on the bottom, and United States, North America on the left. And the colors are going to be where the storms typically form during this month. Okay? Now, look at June. There's a bullseye right off our coast, and this tends to happen. And like the cold front that I mentioned that's coming here on Thursday, as we get closer to May and June, the cold air is going to start diminishing. Those cold fronts won't have as much push to really push through the entire state. So they're going to come down, and they're going to stall. And what happens when they stall is low pressure will start to form if other conditions are present. And we may see a tropical storm or a hurricane that could form off our coast. Now, 2012, this was June of 2012, Tropical Storm Debbie impacted all of us, including Citrus County. But this was downtown Tampa. If anyone's been down there, this is Bay Shore Boulevard, where I've ridden my bike, I drive on those weekends, and those two folks, I don't know why, they're on a raft floating on Bay Shore Boulevard, probably not the best thing to do. Water quality is not good, and, yeah, not good. And so again, it shows, this is a tropical storm. I like showing this image because people think that, oh, if it's not a hurricane, I don't have to worry about it. You know, if it's not a category two, I don't have to worry about, or a category five. It doesn't matter. A tropical storm, or a category one, two, three, four, five, doesn't matter, can deliver significant impact because every single storm is different. As we saw, and I'll show you graphics, you know, Hurricane Charlie in 2004 hit the exact same location where Hurricane Ian hit on September 28th, just a couple of years ago. And they were two completely different storms. They were both category fours, and yet produced significantly different impacts. So again, Tropical Storm Debbie, June of 2012. I can think of June of 2013 was Tropical Storm Andrea. Again, flooded us here, Citrus County, down southward, a lot of wind, a lot of tornadoes, and so forth. Now, looking at July, we're going to start seeing the water temperatures warming in the Atlantic and the Gulf of Mexico. So we're starting to see some color there off the east coast of Florida, United States, and also in the Caribbean. Now, August, again, the colors just show the frequency. How often do storms form in this particular colored area? So now, things are lighting up, you know, the water temperatures are warming up. And this is a perfect time to say that the temperatures out in the Atlantic Ocean right now are similar today to what they should be in July. So again, it is extremely warm out in the Atlantic right now, the water temperatures in the Gulf of Mexico. We don't usually see those water temperatures until we're in July, and yet we've had that in March and April. So again, that just shows the fuel is already out there for these storms to develop. I don't say for fear, it's just for preparedness. You know, we we may have an active hurricane season, as forecasted to be. Hopefully, we won't get one in Florida. But again, we have to be prepared for when that storm does come. Now, this is August, and this was 2004, a famous graphic that we've shown. This is showing Charlie, Francis, and Jean. For anyone that's been to Polk County or know anyone there, that's part of our area responsibility. All three storms unfortunately crisscrossed at different times, right over Polk County. Charlie, like I said, hit Punagorda and Caio Costa, the exact same location where Hurricane Ian made landfall. Moved on up and did a lot of damage in Orlando, a lot of tornadoes. People sought shelter in Orlando and evacuated well inland, and they were impacted by tornadoes. You don't have to evacuate far inland to get out of the storm surge zone, and I'll talk about the impacts of storm surge. That's the number one killer is water. And unfortunately, we're seeing now that most people are losing their life after the storm. And we're seeing decades of technology advances for meteorology and emergency preparedness and and decisions that you all make for communities is working. You know, people are losing their life less frequently during these active storms and changes in climate because we tend to have that urgency leading up to the storm. You know, oh, we're in the cone, the storm's coming. And now, once the storm goes by, many of the public then let their guard down. And I'm here to say that we shouldn't do that. You know, we can't do that. We have to keep that momentum going until all of the impacts are out of the area. And I'll show some statistics on how people lose their life before storms and after. So now September, remember that slide I showed earlier where we all tilted our head to look at September 10th on that graphic? You know, this is the peak of the hurricane season. You know, we're looking at mid-September is the peak, when we start seeing more storms form than any other month of the year. And October, you know, we're starting to get out of the season a little bit, but now, look at our area. Look at the west coast of Florida. We see another peak, just like when I showed you June. We had that peak off of our coast. Well, October, it's happening in reverse. Remember the cold fronts that I said that come down in May and they stall in June? Well, October and early November, we're starting to get cold air coming down again. So we're going to start getting into the cooler season. So cold fronts are going to come down. They won't have enough push to get through. They're going to stall, and we're going to see development. Now, this right here is the last time the greater Tampa Bay, even a little bit far northward up to where we are today, saw the last major hurricane landfall. Okay, and this was October 25th, 1921, so no one in this room was alive back then. Have to glance around a little bit. So no one in this room was alive back then when this storm impacted the area. But again, it was a category three and it hit Tarpon Springs. That is the worst-case scenario for, say, Tampa Bay, okay, for a landfall. Now, you all, with Hurricane Adalia just last September, that location, if it was a little bit farther south, would have been a worst-case scenario for you because it would have pushed even more water into this area, but it moved in, was Dixie County just to the north. And you definitely had a lot of impacts with flooding, storm surge, anywhere from what was like six feet, six or eight feet in this area, and it was worse farther up. So again, this track, let me go back one. So look at those arrows. So this is where storms should form. This is based over, you know, tens of years, you know, 50, 70 years, and this is what actually happened on October 1921. So again, a storm forms south of Cuba, it moves northward, it runs into a front, it can't go any northward because the cold front will block a hurricane. So where's it going to go? It then has to end to Florida. And looking at November, you know, we start seeing, again, the cooler air starting to come down, water temperatures start cooling a little bit, and we start seeing less activity in the month of November. So a quick quiz. You already had me show when Tropical Storm Debbie hit. Any guesses on what year that was? So I heard 2012. I'm sure everyone behind me will raise their hand. This is actually a trick question. Tropical Storm Debbie actually formed in all of those years. And I put it up there because it's kind of example allows me to explain. We have six different lists that we use for tropical storms and hurricanes. So you wonder, how do we get the names? Well, those names are picked out till the end of time, and we rotate them. Now, if a storm were to produce devastating damage, think Katrina, think Ian, think Andrew, those storms, we pull off the list, we retire them, we put another name on there. Debbie thankfully has not done as much damage as it could have, and it has appeared on every, every year. Now, this is this year. We see Debbie is coming back. So we have Debbie back on the list, and so again, six years ago, and we go back in time. So these are the names for this year's list. Maybe someone in the audience or anyone here may see, I don't, let's see, I don't see any names on there. But maybe someone in the audience may have their name on the list. Hopefully, we don't see any devastating storms from this list. But again, it's an interesting thing how some names will repeat, and if they're devastating, we pull them off. But now, I want to take you on a memory, if you will. It's not a good one for me. I went down there and did a lot of the damage surveys. This is Hurricane Ian, and this is one of our high-resolution satellite images. This is out in space. You can see these on the nightly news. This is a slightly more high-resolution one. It's what we call a visible satellite picture. It's taken only during the day. And you can see the flashes. This is what we call a global lightning mapper that we have on one of our NOAA satellites. It's about 22,300 miles above the equator. And we have one on the east coast of the United States and one on the west coast, always monitoring the weather 24 hours a day. And you can see the eye just wrapping up there before making landfall. Hurricane Ian in this image was a category five. It made landfall as a four. I'm here to tell you, it doesn't matter. It wouldn't have made a difference. It would have been more devastating. This was a horrific, horrific devastating storm. And the lightning that you see forming around it usually shows us that it is rapidly intensifying. So you heard something called rapid intensification? If I was here 10, 15 years ago, when I first, you know, got here 17 years ago, I would say that the science is not that good to allow us to predict rapid intensification. And now it's been a decade and a half later, the science has gotten a lot better where we can actually predict whether or not a storm is going to undergo rapid intensification. And what I mean by that is Hurricane Andrew, okay, we'll just pick on Andrew, and also Matthew in 2018 that devastated the Panhandle, Mexico Beach. Three days before, 72 hours before, both of those storms made landfall, they were a tropical storm. So they were 75 mile an hour tropical storm, and they made landfall 72 hours later as a 160-plus mile an hour category five hurricane. And they both underwent rapid intensification. And I say that 72 hours because it's like a benchmark for all of us. You know, it's like one of our evacuation timelines. You know, it could be 48 hours out, 72 hours out. We got to get people away from the coast, get people prepared. When these storms go under rapid intensification, it doesn't give much time. So the more advance notice we can give, the better. And this is a zoomed-in version. So again, we can look down the eye of Hurricane Ian into Charlotte Harbor. So devastation is occurring now. People are losing their life now in this image, and I'll show some other statistics. You know, people drowned, to put it bluntly. And we, me, and the National Weather Service, we're going to be more blunt in our. And, and we, me and the National Weather Service, we're going to be more blunt in our language when we issue our warnings, you know? Before, it could be, you know, storm surge, six or eight feet, or they had 10 to 15 feet there. I measured 15.4 right on Fort Myers Beach after Ian. And we, we want to use language that people will take to heart, you know? You, you will drown if you stay, you know? Not, oh, you, you may be inconvenienced and things like that. So we, we want to make sure that people understand what's happening. This is the radar in Ruskin, so this is the National Weather Service where I'm from, Tampa Bay radar. And you can see, again, the eye wall, this is the rainfall. You had rainfall up here in Citrus County from the outer bands as a storm was moving northward. But again, the, the greatest impacts are going to be within that eye wall. And to the right of it is going to be where the main impact. Now, just keep in mind, the storm is obviously moving, so it's moving off to the northeast. And so the significant impacts of tornadoes, the high winds are going to be around that circle. And as I'll show later, the storm surge, that, that rapid rush of water is going to be on that kind of bottom right-hand quadrant in this example, right over Fort Myers and portions of Collier County. And this is some of the actual impacts of what happened during Ian down there. And you can see, you know, category four landfall, 3:05 PM, Caio Costa, that's right on, you know, the barrier island near Fort Myers Beach. And that was at 3:05. An hour and a half later was Punagorda at 4:35. And significant, significant impacts in that area. This right here shows the storm surge, and I'm going to show Adalia coming up as well. But you can see Ian, the line is the track of the storm that I showed you, you know? The, the southwest to northeast motion. Now, look at the colors, so the, the oranges, the yellows, the reds, that's where the greatest storm surge is. That's where the water came in. You know, that was six, eight, 10, 15 feet of water that went over the top of the barrier island and people that were living there and those that did not evacuate for many reasons. And I'll tell you them when we get to that section. But look to the north of that line, there is no storm surge, okay? So we're talking a matter of 20 miles, very short distance where life and death decisions are going to be. And I'll tell you that our accuracy is beyond that 20 miles when it comes to that. And I'll show an image coming up to relate it to Citrus and Levy County as well. But again, very impactful storm surge in that area. This is rainfall. So again, remember that, that eye wall and to the left, I'm sorry, and to the right of where the heavy rain will actually be. We saw almost 25 inches, 27 inches of rainfall in parts of Charlotte County, DeSoto County, Highlands County, then it went off to where Cape Canaveral is, a significant amount of rain. And people lost their life and drowned in inland flooding, you know, days after the storm. So again, Florida, we're a peninsula, it's about 150 miles from west to east at the width, say from Tampa, you know, St. Petersburg on over to Daytona Beach, about 150 miles. Ian was over 500 miles wide. So it again shows you how vulnerable we are in the state. And we, we can survive all of these storms if we listen to the voices of elected officials, of county administrators, of whoever may, may be making decisions for evacuations, emergency management directors, you know? This is who we have to listen to because the National Weather Service is working so closely with you and helping you make those decisions when, when hours and days matter. Now, this right here, again, it may be hard to, to read, we call it Decision Support Services. That's our phrase in the National Weather Service or DSS. It's a year-round campaign, you know? Here I am today, it's not June 1st. Most of the work is done before the hurricane season starts. Last Friday, like I said, Commissioner Kennard was down in Fort Myers with me. And Ken Prink, I don't know if he's in the audience, he was down with us. And we met with Fort Myers Media, in fact, all the stations were there. And all the emergency managers of Southwest Florida were there. And our National Weather Service in Miami joined us because they cover Collier County and, and that area of Lake Okeechobee. And we, we talk about how we can do things better. We talk about what we learned last year and years prior. We talk about how we can change messaging to help the public better understand what the vulnerabilities are, how they can protect themselves from hurricanes and tornadoes. But again, this is a timeline of basically the, you know, the preparedness phase, planning, response and recovery. So all of the, the language that emergency management practices year-round. So again, we go out after the hurricane season and we work with communities to help them better prepare for the next storm. And during the hurricane season, we're making sure that the information gets out there to the people that need it. This image here, I know Chris is behind me, sitting behind me, Chris Evans, the Director of Emergency Management. Here is Citrus County, I'm on the right-hand side, this is my office in Ruskin. We have a couple of folks from Citrus County Emergency Management, Dan Noah on the left. I know he's been up here before, he was our warning coordination meteorologist. He just retired the end of December. And I'm hopefully going to be able to hire the backfield coming up soon. So again, this is an example of where we work so closely with the counties, we work so closely with the divisions of emergency management. And yeah, we, we work hand in hand when it comes to hurricanes and any natural disaster. I want to walk you through what it's actually like, you know? What Chris Evans is on with us at the National Weather Service. Every six hours, we go through these briefings when a hurricane is coming our way. And this is three to five days before an impact. And this is Hurricane Ian as an example. And you can see, you know, we got the famous cone that I'll talk about. And what we need to know about it, because it doesn't mean what a lot of people think it means. And then we step through the preparedness actions, you know? What can you do three and five days out? And then one to two days before the landfall, before the impact, then we're going to start localizing it a little more because now we have more data, we have more information about the storm itself. We can zero in on the track a little bit better because as we saw with Hurricane Ian, the very first track, and I'll show that, was over Fort Myers. But we know very well that it, that track moved up to Tampa Bay, went to Apalachicola, it was over Citrus County, came back down and eventually, you know, Fort Myers again. So we're giving very localized information, we're talking about the tornado threat, the flash flooding threat and the river flooding that far out as well. And we're showing what's called the time of arrival graphics. And this is going to be, you know, we have raises, you can see on the right-hand side, you know, there's the county, Citrus County there, it looks like 5:00 AM Wednesday, 11:00 AM Wednesday. So the, we have the earliest arrival and we have the most likely arrival. Now, with meteorology, we deal with probabilistics, almost like politics, you know? Deal with probabilistics of elections, probabilistic of how the public may respond to something. So the earliest arrival is what we call a reasonable worst-case scenario. So that means 10% of the time, it may be a little bit earlier than that. But 90% of the time is going to be that or around that time. But for emergency management and for public understanding, you should have all of your actions completed by the earliest arrival time. So in this example, on this particular briefing, 5:00 AM Wednesday, folks in Citrus County should already have their, if they have storm shutters, have them up. Make sure that they are possibly already in an inland location to get away from the water. Anything like that would be there. Now, the most likely would be, okay, this is when we feel the wind gusts are actually going to start happening. And talking about the cone, this is important because a lot of people, including some meteorologists, have a misunderstanding on what it means, okay? Now, the cone only means where the center of the storm may be two-thirds of the time. So what is that? 66.66, so 67% of the time, the hurricane will be in that bounded area, it'll be within that cone. So one-third of the time, it could be to the left of it, one-third of the time, it could be the right, equal chances. Now, Ian was a good example of this, and I'm going to zoom in. So this was the first advisory, and this is an example of another cone on the right. Now, this is when Ian was forecast to make landfall over, you know, Apalachicola, Apalachicay Bay, the Panhandle. Now, where do the impacts actually happen? Okay, I'm going to overlay it. This is where the strongest wind gusts were, and you saw that on the earlier slide. So you can see the cone, you can see how wide it can be. This is where the strongest winds were. This is where the heaviest rainfall was. Remember I said about 26 inches, 27 inches? Now, the killer storm surge, this is where the killer storm surge was, okay? Right on that edge of this particular advisory. Because again, it's always going to be to the right of where the center of the storm will be. So this year, you're going to see the cone a lot, you're going to see it whenever a storm is coming towards Florida. Keep in mind that, that just means where the center, the eye wall, that small eye wall would be. And we know that you can be 100 miles away from that eye wall and have life-threatening impacts. Now, I mentioned this is Advisory One, you see it on the top. So again, Advisory One from the National Hurricane Center. And this is exactly where the storm went. So the very first advisory was exactly where it went. But we know it changed because again, the track wobbles and it moves around. And this was, looks like this was the track for the 25th, Sunday at 5:00 AM up on the Panhandle. Monday morning, it's coming right close to where we are today. Tuesday morning, you know, we're all still in the cone, but it's starting to shift southward. And then Wednesday morning, when the landfall was about to happen several hours later, again, at, this is 5:00 AM, landfall happened at 3:05 PM. You can see the impact of where that storm was. Now, to give you a perspective on, again, remember Ian was over 500 miles wide. The eye wall itself was about maybe 50 miles wide. There's an example, okay? Ian is on the bottom left, it's moving off to the northeast towards Fort Myers. If a hurricane, if that hurricane shifted or wobbled 20 miles to the left, something that these storms do, they rotate around, sometimes they rotate around themselves, and it just wobbles a little bit. Remember Hurricane Charlie, that little wobble to the right went into Fort Myers. If Ian had wobbled 20 miles to the left, draw a line, that's the image on the left, it hits Tampa Bay, okay? That's 125 miles away. So we're about 250 miles away. If Hurricane Ian had shifted 25 miles, just 25 miles, landfall would be where we are now. And all of the horrific images that we saw in Fort Myers would be up in this area. So again, that, again, not saying this to be fearful, saying it to emphasize how no matter where you are in that cone, you have got to take it seriously and know where the storm is. You know, there's something in, in psychology and sociology called anchoring, you know, where people will anchor on a particular message, you know? They'll, they'll watch the news, they'll say, oh, on, on, you know, the forecast came out on Friday, it's going to hit Fort Myers, here I am, and Citrus County, I don't have to worry about it. And they don't tune back in because they anchored on, we're safe. Don't do that, you know? When it comes to hurricane season, and if there's a storm out there every single day, listen to everyone up here, listen to Chris Evans. The National Weather Service speaks through everyone here, and we're providing updates every six hours. And that's where the information is coming from. And this right here shows you, this is, wasn't a forecast, this is actually what happened. Where were those strong winds? You know, the, the orange, I'm actually colorblind for full disclosure, but I think that's orange and red. But the orange is tropical storm force winds, you can see how wide that is. And then you can see the red in the middle, and that's where the, the stronger tropical storm and hurricane force winds. So you were under it here, look how wide that is, you know? So it wasn't just a Fort Myers issue, it was a lot of the state of Florida. Now, looking across history, you know, the costliest hurricanes that have ever hit the United States, unfortunately, Florida's tends to be on that list a lot. And you can see Hurricane Katrina, it also hit Florida first, you know, hit southern Florida, and then it moved across the Gulf and rapidly intensified over the, what we call the loop current, the warm water in the Gulf of Mexico and just exploded before it hit Louisiana, Mississippi. You can see Ian on this, you can see Irma on this and, and so forth. So again, significant amount of costliest hurricanes. And now looking at, you know, the deadliest, you know, the hurricane fatalities across the area. Again, unfortunately, Ian is on that list with 149 fatalities. There were 36 in Lee County, you know, people that drowned with the storm surge. And look at the numbers for a second though, look at the 1900 storm of Galveston. You know, back then, it, it was estimated, but thousands of people lost their life from that storm. And, you know, even looking at Katrina and even Irma, you know? My hope is, could we ever get this down to zero? You know, I would, yes, I would, what drives me is that, yes, I think we could. You know, but there are some folks that either will not listen to the advice or evacuation orders, and they take matters into their own hands. And I'm here to say, please don't do that, you know? When evacuations are ordered, leave, you don't have to go to Atlanta. You can just go 10 miles inland. And the, the point is to live, you know? If you're going to go to Orlando or to Brooksville, yes, you may get a tornado, but the point is you will be alive, you know? These people that stayed for many reasons in Fort Myers, lost their life because of water. And, and I'll, I'll get deeper into that. Looking at the direct fatalities by state, we're in Florida, you can see we're on that. Texas, Florida, North Carolina are those spikes right there. Looking at the indirect fatalities, so what does that mean, indirect fatalities? So that's going to be after landfall, you know, people that are out there cleaning up and they're walking through their property and they hit a power line that is still live, or they have a heart attack. You know, one thing up there, you'll see on the top of the list on the right, carbon monoxide poisoning. So think for a second, how did that happen? You know, and, you know, generators. And so people will take generators and, you know, maybe they're fearful that it's going to be stolen, or they just bought it and they want to bring it in their garage or their living room. Trust me, people have done this. And now they bring the generator in their home and they have carbon monoxide poisoning. So again, remember that and, and don't do that. You know, Hurricane Ian, there I am on the left-hand side with the national media, that may have been the Weather Channel or National CNN or Fox News. They came down, it was, media was everywhere in Fort Myers. And I was discussing what, what was happening, what we were seeing with the damage survey, the 15.4 feet that I personally measured, I mean, think about 15.4 feet. That's, I'm six feet, so that's above where we are right now. And that home in the middle, okay? The storm surge, there was a woman, the top middle windows, she survived. That home, I mean, she should have evacuated obviously, but that home was built in a way where the water would pass through the under portion, it destroyed it. Her kitchen was in the middle windows, there's a video on YouTube, you, you could find it if you search for it. She's videotaping outward and you see water, she's waist-deep in water on that second floor in her kitchen. And there was a barge going by her to the right. If the barge had gone into her home, we wouldn't have seen that video, but she chose not to evacuate. Now, on the right-hand side, Jennifer Hubbard from my office, she's one of our senior meteorologists, she's measuring how high the water got in a different home. And looking a little bit more, you know, after Hurricane Harvey in 2017, we started telling people to bring chainsaws into their attic when they choose not to evacuate and they decide to, you know, take matters into their own hands. Well, why do you think you would have to take a chainsaw into your attic to survive from a hurricane? And it's because of the bottom left-hand image, the water, exactly, the water would be up to our, over our heads and you have to chainsaw yourself or an axe out of a, an attic. I mean, it's horrific, who wants to do that? You see Matt LaChey Bridge causeway wiped out, you see, what is that, Highway 70? You know, we're looking at far inland, you know, flooded from that 25, 26 inches of rainfall. Now, again, this was a news release that went out when I was down there, the gentleman to the next to me, he was in charge of the Miami National Weather Service, Pablo Santos. So we were both walking the path, doing damage surveys and talking with people that survived. And also talking to people that had friends or family that did not survive. It was a horrific event, and this image here is, it's basically a little gas station mini mart that was on the land side of Fort Myers Beach. And I'll tell you, I've given this presentation about, oh, over 40 times. And this image, I'm actually on the top right-hand side, you can see the blue shirt, used to choke me up and I would have eyes tearing on this one. I spoke to this man and I can already feel it in my throat, it's just amazing when you go through these events. But that man right there, I spoke to him, he stayed there during Hurricane Ian. And the owner also stayed there. So those two gentlemen stayed in that mini mart as the storm surge was, was coming in. And he told me, I went outside, I held on to the roof for dear life. He showed me his hands, they were all cut up. And he said that he saw bodies floating by him. And then as the storm surge was going out, he saw them, he looked at them, their eyes were open, and he said their spirits were gone. And again, I say this because I think it's important to share the stories of the people that went through it because it could happen to any of us, you know? Any of us in this room, we live in Florida, we live near the coast, it could happen. And this image, you know, was the door that I was standing by. You can see that faint line of, of dirt, that's how high the water got into the closet. So again, above our heads, and this was on the land side of Fort Myers, you know? Many people lost their life on Fort Myers Beach where they were not letting, you know, the public or media go over there. We went over there. And again, to share another brief story, just looking at the time, you know, we had helicopter surveys over there. Governor DeSantis was about to fly in, President Biden was about to fly in, so we had to clear that space. But when we were out there, we saw, you know, they were still doing recovery operations. And this is, I say this because it's very common during major hurricanes, you know? Hurricane Harvey in Texas, Michael in the Panhandle, Andrew, Ian, Irma, all of them. If you live along the coast, you have got to get away from the water, you know? I can't put it more bluntly. But there were people that were tied, tied themselves to trees. And, and think about that for a second, you know? You're there, you're at your home on Fort Myers Beach. To get to the point in your mind of not leaving, that I'm going to tie myself to the tree in my backyard. tie myself to the tree in my backyard, it's because they're fearful of the water coming in. But we often, you know, I'm six foot, the water was 15 feet, you can't tie yourself high enough, so they drowned. And again, it's, it's the horror that happens with all these stories. But looking forward, you know, again, some of the direct fatalities, you know, we talk about working more closely with vulnerable communities, vulnerable populations, the underserved, the underrepresented, you know, there's, there's many categories of people that have a hard time getting out of, out of the way. And you could see with Ian, 74% of people were 60 or older, and 52% were 70 or older, so many were, you know, the elderly population that drowned in that area. You may have seen some of the footage of cars, you know, many vehicles that were at the bottom of the intercoastal waterway, they were pulling vehicles, you know, state of Florida, Lee County, Charlotte County, you know, people drowned, they tried to escape the storm surge as it was coming in, and that's the wrong time to evacuate. And similar indirect fatalities from Ian, this is after the storm, so again, 80% of the people were 60 plus, 65% were over 70. You know, and this image here, I used to say, before Hurricane Ian, I used to have a story, Hurricane Camille, anyone ever remember that name, 1969 Louisiana, New Orleans? I used to say, and then Katrina, '05. So I used to say that more, Hurricane Katrina killed more people during Hurricane, or Hurricane Camille killed more people during Hurricane Katrina. And everyone thinks, what do I mean by that? It's, it's because a lot of people did not evacuate during Hurricane Camille, so in their mind, they survived a major hurricane. In comes Katrina, they think, I survived, I'm going to stay again, and it didn't work for them. Same thing now, you know, we unfortunately have a new story where, you know, Hurricane Charlie, you know, we told people, we all told people, you know, a category four storm is coming towards you in southwest Florida, you have got to evacuate. Many people did, thousands of people did, you know, and a handful, you know, or more did not. And some told me personally, when I talked to people, why didn't you leave? And I had a, a collection of reasons, some were, we didn't think it was going to be that bad, so there was that element, which happens. There was, we knew it was going to be bad, but we didn't know where to go, we didn't have the means, financial means to go, so there's that element. There were folks that didn't know it was coming, you know, so there's just, there's going to be people that don't watch the news, don't listen to any of us, and then it takes community efforts, you know, go to your neighbor, you know, knock on doors, you know, let people know. And then one that really stuck out to me, which I had never heard in my 30 years with the National Weather Service, and it, it actually hits, hits pretty hard, it was to an elderly group, and, and they had said that we were afraid to leave our home and go to a shelter because we were afraid we would not be allowed to go back, because they felt that maybe cognitively, maybe they have dementia or Alzheimer's, and maybe they wouldn't be allowed to go back home. And, and that's, you know, how hard is that? That is, that is so hard to wrestle with, you know? But again, it's an element, and it's something that we all need to remember for friends and family, and for all of our decisions, and reaching out to the elderly population and non-English speaking population as well. But look at the two, you know, the Hurricane Charlie and Hurricane Ian, both category four storms, you know, Hurricane Charlie on the left, Friday the 13th in August 2004, I did that damage survey as well, I was at our Weather Service headquarters in DC at the time, but came down to the area, very small storm, six or seven feet of storm surge, category four hurricane, Hurricane Ian, extremely large, large I wall, you know, 15 feet of storm surge. So again, if you leave here with anything today, no two storms are the same, could care less about what the category is, you're going to hear about it a lot, it doesn't matter, get out of its way i- is the point. And this is a perfect image, this is social science researchers, this one right here, professor from Yale University, this is after Hurricane Sandy up in 2012, the same year we had tropical storm Debbie and Hurricane Isaac, another name on the list this year that hit during the Republican National Convention in Tampa that year, 2012. But this right here was research that was replicated even during recent hurricanes. And you can see, there's always those folks, you know, the first outs, you know, this storm could form off Africa, and they're leaving, you know, they're leaving Citrus County, they're leaving Tampa, they're leaving Miami, they're not going to take their chances, and, and I love it, you know, it's like, get them away from the area, and they'll come back. But you can see the ones that are a little hesitant, maybe they're going to wait for that cone to get over the area, you know, there's still time. Maybe they'll put their shutters up, maybe they'll buy plywood, maybe they don't have it. But you can see, look at the bottom two, 49% of people are the reluctant, are the diehards, the ones that are really going to be waiting till the last minute, that's a significant amount of population for Citrus County, Levy County, Hernando County, Tampa Bay, doesn't matter where you are. Again, this was up in New England, you know, New Jersey where the study was done, and similar numbers for Florida and the Gulf Coast. So again, that's something that, you know, when I said earlier, can we ever get the death toll down to zero? I would love to say, I still have hope we can, 49% of the people are battling all of us on that. But if you're in the room today, if you're listening today, leave, get away from the area when you're ordered to evacuate. And I hear sometimes, oh, you, you busted the forecast, we left for no reason. I always loved that phrase, you know, we left for no reason. And I always tell them, I said, you, you're alive, you know? Because it means, it means that, look, look at those horrific images, you know, I choked up on the Fort Myers, and I've given this talk over 50 times. It, you don't want to go through that, you know? So if you have the luxury of saying, oh, we, oh, we're wrong 50% of the time, whatever it is, which, which is false, you have the opportunity to go back to the area, to go back to your home, that's what matters. You don't want to be in that 49%. So last resort, safety messaging, this is, this was generated after Hurricane Harvey, you know, record rainfall, they had over 50 inches of rainfall, but also with Ian, people did not evacuate. And for those that could have, you know, again, bring your chainsaw, bring an axe, if you don't have one, get one, you need to go vertical, you know? Hopefully you're in a, a structure that can withstand damage enough. But again, mobile homes, you need to leave that area and get to a better structure, a shelter, Citrus County shelters, wherever you're ordered to go. And, and looking at Adalia, so again, this is a storm that impacted this area more than Tampa Bay or any part, but Adalia, again, made landfall north of us in Dixie County. We saw flooding along the entire coast of Florida, and that can happen. Again, a storm does not have to make landfall in order for it to produce flooding. The landfall will just produce more flooding. So again, look at this, four feet, you got six feet, seven feet north of where we are today, you can see Cedar Key imagery, I mean, I'm sure some people here today had flooding in their home. And remember the December storm? This wasn't a hurricane, this wasn't a tropical storm, this was December 17th, and there was flooding here in Citrus County that matched what occurred during Adalia. So this is a low pressure system, we call it a nor'easter that forms. Sometimes these can, these can be extremely powerful and more powerful than some tropical storms, but this is typical of an El Nino year for Florida winter. When we have a strong El Nino, like what we're coming out of, Florida winters, we get more tornadoes, like we had in October, we get more storms like this that become blizzards off the east coast of the United States. So again, it's, again, Florida is a very vulnerable state for severe weather. And finally, if you're in this room and don't have this app, I'm sure there's Citrus County apps and media apps that you also have, the FEMA weather app, it's free, go to your, your phone, wherever you download apps, just look for FEMA weather app, and you could enter in a handful of counties for you to get weather alerts, and it's definitely something that, that would be good to have in your issue. And, yep, and that's all I have. Again, thank you very much.
Outstanding presentation, and Commissioner Bay has already let me know she wanted to say something or ask a question.
Quick question that I'd be interested in. Number one, we've had an extremely wet season, and so if we had a, you know, ground saturation, what impacts does that have if you have a hurricane on the heels of that? Number two, has it Dorian that hit the Abacos, and it hovered for 48 hours and only moved at one mile an hour, is that, could that happen in Florida? And has it ever happened? And what would that mean?
That's good, excellent questions, Commissioner, and, and the first one, so we, last year, you may remember, we had a drier than normal wet season, you know, it's usually like from June through September, and we had a drier normal. So we went into our traditional dry season already drier than normal. So with El Nino, we typically get, which ironically, I didn't mean to show all the slides, but right there on El Nino, we typically get more rainfall in Florida during the winter. So we had more rainfall during our dry season, which is good, because that means we see less wildfires, like what we saw in 98. So that actually helps us. The only thing, though, when we start getting into now our traditional hurricane season, some of the water levels are, are going to be higher than they normally would, but I think because we had a drier wet season, that it averaged out. And so the rainfall that we had would actually was helpful, because we had an abnormally dry wet season, so that's good. So moving into the hurricane season, then, yes, we're kind of on average now for our water levels. If anything, we're out of the drought, which is good, as of a few months ago. Now, with Hurricane Dorian, that, an excellent example, because we all hear about climate change and global warming and everything like that, you know, we can talk about the facts, the earth is warmer, you know, and the atmosphere is changing because it's warmer. And with Hurricane Dorian, we're starting to see more storms are moving slower. We saw that with Hurricane Harvey in Texas, where the storm comes in, it slows, it stalls, it produces, you know, incredible flooding, record flooding. Yes, Dorian could happen over Florida, they would just need a certain, certain set of circumstances for the wind above it to not be there, and that's what happened over Dorian. So it went into an area of very conflicting steering currents, there were steering currents to the north, to the south, it was in this lull area, like a twig that gets caught in a little eddy in a river. And yes, that could happen over our area. And just imagine if Ian was much slower moving, that rainfall would have been, you know, we had 26 inches and it was moving, it would be almost double that, like what we saw in Harvey. So that's one of our worst-case scenarios, where we're going to start seeing storms producing more rainfall, because with a warmer atmosphere, the storms are moving slower. Will they do it all the time? No, but, but no, that's what we're seeing, starting to increase more.
And what happens to well supply when you have that type? I mean, is, are the wells contaminated?
It, it depends on the area, there could be, depending on what has been going on in that agricultural area beforehand, there is freshwater runoff, it could run off fertilizers and different nutrients or pollutants into the Gulf of Mexico, it could do it into the, you know, the river systems, things like that. The limestone with Florida, it's a natural filtration system also, so it tends to get filtered out before it gets into the aquifer. And so the aquifer has had good opportunities to recharge with water flow because of the rains that we've had this winter because of El Nino. So it would depend locally, and that's more of like a, you know, Department of Agriculture, but, but on the science side of it, the limestone can filter out pollutants, but for a local scales, people's properties could get polluted water if there's fertilizer runoff into that area.
I just read it somewhere, one of the storms, that there was a lot of well contamination. Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind hanging out in the front row, I'm going to open it to the public, and would anyone like to ask any questions? Come on in. Please state your name for the record and let us know what your question is, you get three minutes, hopefully if it's just a question, and you'll need to fill out a green card for the clerk.
Okay, I will. My name's Dan DeVilles, I actually live in Ozilla, and I was there during Adalia, and I was there in, for December 17th.
I'm sorry, you have to, you're supposed to address me, sorry, it's just protocol, you're supposed to address the chair, sorry.
Yes. And also, your question was about storms, 85, I don't remember the name of the storm, maybe you could refresh my memory, but it hung out off of Cedar Key for a day, and then backed up, and I believe hit Indian Rocks Beach. So when we ask about the warnings, we've had a lot of warnings out there that we know that we weren't going to have high water. That, I, I understand a lot of people don't leave, and, and I took that chance on myself, and, and I don't, I believe that anybody that chooses to stay, there should be some ramifications if they decide to get scared afterwards. Absolutely. But it doesn't help when we get, when a storm's not going to be any surge there, or we, we're pretty sure there's not going to be wind damage, and I'm not a meteorologist, don't get me wrong, but living there for a long time, I, I understand when I'm going to get water, even like December 17th, we, a lot of us out there knew that day, I walked to the, to the little store, to the outpost, and it was a foot deep in front of the church there, that day. The whole road basically was flooded, down at the end of the road floods at least once a month on average, that all sand dollars underwater. So I, I guess my question is, is, we're, we're a unique entity there, and I, I would like better communication as far as understanding when, you know, Mike Pendergast sends out a, a message and calls us, that, that he is giving good advice, because we'll heed the warning if the, if it's, if it's, I, I don't want to say, shouldn't say good advice, but valid advice for the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
That was a fantastic presentation, I don't think I've ever seen anything as comprehensive of that. I thank you organizing this, Commissioner Canard, thank you. And I'd love to get your card, I'd love to get his card to maybe have him do that presentation in the chamber in June, or sometime. But I'm going to address the elephant in the room here, is when you're talking about evacuation, it is water that will kill people. If there's false alarms, or people don't trust the person that's giving out the information, I think that it causes problems, you know, it's like, how many times can you call Wolf, cry Wolf? And we've had some false alarms, and I think that people like, well, the last time I evacuated, it wasn't that bad, that can cause that. So I'm going to go to the third rail here and ask y'all, have y'all considered, present company excluded, but have y'all considered taking over the emergency operations center? The chair is the one that actually declares natural, natural disasters. The, the gentleman that was mentioned that makes the calls does not really play well with other stakeholders, there's no unifying command, there's no discussion amongst the business community when something's happening, when roads are closing, pretty much nothing. So that is something I think is your responsibility, you're the ones that declare the emergency, you're the ones that perhaps have a public safety director, and I think that y'all should do your research and have some off-the-record conversations with some of the stakeholders and see that, if they don't agree with that position. It's something that you should strongly consider. I don't know that too many counties have the SO running it anymore. It needs to be a non-political person, maybe a public safety director under your employ that overlooks all of your public safety responsibilities. And it is, will work with others in the community, the Chamber of Commerce, the school board, your, your own fire and EMS. I think it's long past the time that y'all need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wooton. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Lamar, would you like to comment or answer the question of the first gentleman?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I think first gentleman was talking about Hurricane Elena, so Hurricane Elena in 1985 was a very powerful storm that sat right over the area, so with Commissioner Bay's, I believe, with the question about Dorian, a perfect example with Hurricane Elena, where that just sat right off our coast, produced a lot of damage. Back then, a lot of citrus crops were, were damaged, a lot of flooding, and it was just out there for a few days. The other one, again, obviously, I think that was up to, you know, posed to your decision, our relationship with the National Weather Service and the Director of Emergency Management is incredible, I can't overstate it enough. Chris Eddin and I are in constant communication, and he constantly will also connect with our, our office, the National Weather Service in Ruskin. And now, after the integrated warning team meeting that Commissioner Canard was at, we approved his membership in our NBS chat system, so we have a 24/7 chat system that is specifically only for response officials, media, and also elected officials, and so he's now part of that. And so that's going to be, and I think others on the board as well, I remember seeing the names, now I see them today. So just know that the Board of County Commissioners are now part of a 24-hour, 24/7 communications platform with my office, the National Weather Service in Tampa, and that's an opportunity for you to go, any questions you may have about something, there could be one-on-one.
for you to go, any questions you may have about something, there could be one-on-one. If you want to put something out there for, say, media notice, put it in there, all the media is going to be in there, you know, Tampa Bay media covers Citrus County. So I can't thank enough Commissioner Kennard for actually driving all the way down in one day to Fort Myers, we did a radio show, I think it was Mike Reeves, Friday morning, we talked about how important the people of Citrus County are and the services provided from the National Weather Service, from the county commissioners, from the Office of Emergency Management with the Sheriff Office. It takes a team, you know, I can't stress it enough, and it's not called an integrated warning team for nothing, it's about integrating elected officials with media, with government, and it's never worked so well as I've seen in Florida throughout my 30 years. So is there a room for improvement? Of course there is. And I think we collectively can hopefully find that solution together. Thank you.
Thank you. And I concur with Mr. Wooton, I would like your distance card if you don't mind, too. Thank you. Commissioner Schleibach?
Thank you, it was nice hearing from you again, and I do like that you're going to incorporate stronger language. I found that frustrating last hurricane season when I was the chair, and I would talk to people and they're like, nope, I'm going to ride it out, I got a cat. I'm like, come on, you know, you and your cat can go to the shelter. So I appreciate, I didn't feel comfortable saying, you know, the water is going to be high, you know, so I'm glad you're incorporating stronger language. I think that's, at this time of our lives, they need to hear the harsh reality, so thank you.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, thank you. And again, Brian, thanks for coming up and giving a great presentation. This all came out of the Zoom call we had last fall, and it just felt like this was something that the board and the public at large needed to see. So thank you, I appreciate it, I'm looking forward to being part of that chat as well. And David, regarding your concerns with Ozello, I completely understand, the folks out there really keep their, keep a thumb, if you will, on tide levels, on what's happening out there, and what the flooding situation is going to, is going to look like, because that is a different area of our community that is much more, I guess, in tune with the flooding situation. And so certainly, the more information that we can get regarding how it's going to affect the islands out in Ozello is particularly important. When I was down at the integrated warning team on Friday, one of the topics of discussion was the timing of the storm surge, and maybe trying to get more of that information out there, that it's helpful to know that there's going to be four to six feet of surge, but is that, is that coming at a high tide, is that going to, you know, is that expected at the bottom of the tide cycle? That kind of information, even though that surge includes the tide, from what I've learned, that would be beneficial to know. I know that was something that was probably the number one fielded call and email that I had during Adalia was, all right, we keep seeing that there's a surge coming, when is it going to be here? And I think that Chris Evans would agree that unfortunately, there were a number of people that had to be rescued after the storm, because the storm had passed, they went back home, and then all of a sudden, the water came in, and it was, oh my goodness, get me out of here. So the timing part of it was a big part of the discussion down there, and I think that's something that the Ozello community in particular will be interested to hear more about.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes, Commissioner Finnegan, who has anything?
Great presentation.
All right, all good. Thank you, Mr. Lamar, appreciate it. All right, let's see, I guess I will see, we will see everyone back here at 1 o'clock, and we are adjourned.